All right, here we're here, we can get started. All right, let's go ahead and get started. Good evening, everybody. Welcome everyone to the May 2nd, 2022 Burlington City Council Work Session Meeting. As just a matter of protocol, we do have Councilmember Kathy Heitz is in attendance remotely and joining us via Zoom. Kathy, can you hear us okay?
Um, it's okay.
Okay.
Please speak up though, it is hard.
I can't speak up anymore. I'll be yelling. So this meeting is being livestreamed and recorded on the City of Burlington's YouTube page at www.youtube.com/COBNC. The first item this evening on our agenda, MA, is impervious area analysis and stormwater fee structure evaluation update. So we will record as Water Resources Director Bob Patterson.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. If you recall, back in, I believe, 2019, we had some discussions about the possible need to do some larger kind of regional type stormwater projects. And that brought up the question of how do we fund those types of projects? Also, what would be future needs to address stormwater issues in the city? So we went through a process to select a consultant. We selected Raftellus Financial Consultants, who do a lot of rate studies, both in the water sewer utility as well as stormwater utility. They help to develop stormwater utilities across, not only North Carolina, but most of the United States. And they partnered with an engineering firm, WK Dixon, to do some of the technical engineering aspects of this analysis. So throughout 2020, basically, we worked with them on that effort. If you recall, when we implemented the stormwater, or actually, prior even, I think, to when we implemented the stormwater program, the city adopted a stormwater fee, which was a flat fee at the time, in 2005, '06? It was adopted, it was $2 a month. Over time, that has been increased to the current $7 a month. So that is charged to all properties within the city that have a that basically give a city bill for water sewer drainage service, whether it is a single-family residential property, or whether it's a large stormwater tract that pays the same amount. So I believe when that fee was enacted, at some point in time, there was consideration expected or given that we would move to an impervious area-based fee, which provides a more equitable approach so that some properties that have larger impervious areas and are contributing more stormwater runoff would pay some higher fees when you're doing the residential. And so that's kind of where we're at with this analysis. Jen Tab... Tabances, I'm sorry, with Raftellus is here to present that. The analysis, some possible of future levels of service that the stormwater fee can provide, and also some of the potential impacts for fee changes. And the quick, simple analysis is that they've done an analysis of the average residential impervious area. So you set that as the basis of your fee, and then larger non-residential tracts will some multiple that fee. On the extreme end, if you charge that fee based on the entire impervious area of a tract, so a large tract could see a conceivably very high impact bill compared to $7 a month. But there are options to mitigate that, whether it's implementing and ramping that fee up over a period of years, or whether it's capping that fee at a certain dollar figure so that that impact is not as severe. So I think that kind of gives the introduction to where we're at. Amy Barber, our stormwater manager, is here. She's served as kind of a point person on this project. And Jen has been our consultant. Please, I'll turn that over to Jen.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers, I'm glad to be here. That was a very comprehensive introduction, so I think I can breeze through some of my background materials here. I don't know if I'm supposed to be clicking through the slides or am I? Oh, you've got it, okay. All right, perfect. Then, or I'll do it, you know, rather. All right, so just as a quick agenda, we've got a little bit of project background. Again, a lot of that has just been covered, a status update. And then we want to get your feedback and input on the level of service alternatives that we've been looking at and at kind of our next steps as it relates to communication and other elements of the project. There is a lot of material here. I'm gonna try to go at a reasonable pace, but not take too much of your time. If at any point you want me to go faster or slow down in the top discussion, please just interrupt. I'm happy to do that. So, project background, again, the stormwater program is currently funded by a $7 a month flat fee for every utility in the county. It pays for operation and maintenance of the stormwater infrastructure. It pays for capital projects. It pays for the cost share program for stormwater projects that cross onto private property. And it pays for the activities related to your MS4, your water quality permit compliance. It's a fairly big program, and it's currently being covered by the $7 a month charge. Starting what has now been several years ago, the staff here brought some things to this body for consideration, including, you know, a refinement of the prioritization for those cost share projects. And as Mr. Patterson mentioned, some increased funding needs for bigger stormwater management facilities. So at the end of 2019, at a work session, staff was directed to kind of look into a fee structure change. And Scott was here with Q. We selected my firm, Raftellus, and our subconsultant, WK Dixon, in mid-2021. So we're happy to be working with you all. As just a tiny bit of background on our firms, just so, you know, Raftellus is a finance and management consulting firm focused on our local government and utility clients. WK Dixon is a community infrastructure and engineering consulting firm. We together have worked in a number of places around North Carolina, and we separately have worked even more places around North Carolina. The WK Dixon and Raftellus partnership, I think, is quite complementary and has kind of that engineering program planning side paired with the finance and management side. So that's how we've been operating on this project. From the outset, our kind of project goals were to establish a rate structure change that brings in much-needed increased revenue for this flooding concerns and water quality improvement efforts. And importantly, to improve the equity of the stormwater funding approach and tie fees recovered from our customers more closely to the impact caused by those customers. As a quick overview of the project approach, we wanted to start with the program planning and developing revenue requirements for several different levels of structure alternatives. And we will look at those in just a moment. Then we moved on to an analysis of single-family residential properties in the impervious area on a typical single-family residential property that forms kind of the unit of service basis for the updated rate structure that we're looking at. We also measured impervious surfaces on all other types of properties throughout the city to get a full understanding of all the impervious areas in the city and have that serve as a strong basis for the updated rate structure. Raftellus has built a rate model and impact analysis tool to look at the impact of various level of service, rate structure, and implementation policy choices. So that has been developed and we've been using it throughout this process. Our plan has been to move on to public outreach and participation and have that be sort of iterative with the rate modeling and impact analysis to understand kind of where the public stands on the stormwater management, what they want to see, how that ties with our level of service alternatives. And that's one area where we are looking for some input from this group and then just report some presentations like this. So I think I've kind of covered where we are on the project. But we've gone through task force, so we've done all the measuring of impervious area. We've built the rate model and have been using it. We've developed revenue requirements for four different levels of service alternative, well, three alternatives on top of sort of the status quo. And we're, again, looking for some feedback before we move on to the next step. So I'm going to move into the level of service alternatives. I will be representing WK Dixon's good work and I'll answer as many questions as I can related to that. If there's something super technical, I might have to get back with you. But kind of the framework is that we're looking at sort of the current level of service, that is sort of the status quo operational approach, kind of similar capital funding levels into the future and that sort of thing as the baseline. And then three level of service steps above that. So Level C is kind of one step up, and then Level B is in the middle, and Level A is sort of the top-notch level of service that we're looking at here. Each of the three enhanced levels of service, C, D, and A, all include an element of watershed planning and asset inventory efforts. They all include some additional funding for capital projects. And they all include some enhancement to operations and maintenance. This is a bit wordy, but in a nutshell, what I mean by watershed planning and asset inventory is kind of a set of inventory evaluation, modeling, and planning efforts to prioritize stormwater infrastructure projects in the most thoughtful and effective way throughout the city so that, you know, we're tackling kind of the most important projects first, but also, and those are kind of the biggest impact, but also thinking down the line so that we don't make a fight bigger here, cause downs to problems two years from now, that sort of thing. So sort of a comprehensive planning effort from a capital planning perspective.
I'll just add, on the inventory portion, we have a, an inventory, we have a map of the storm drainage systems, but we don't have elevations on pipes that are necessary to really do the modeling effort that we lends to that watershed planning.
Sure. I'm sorry. Yes. Uh, that's okay, I can do it like this. Well, it doesn't bother me because it's like this. Okay, it's okay with you. All right. Yeah, okay. Do you want to go back to the question? Oh.
You see that gap?
Good.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm surprised.
Yeah, so the, on the inventory, as I was saying, we have a map that shows our pipes, the kind of X, Y physical location, but it doesn't, they don't have elevations associated with that. And you really need elevations to do the modeling that leads to good watershed planning. So that's part of the asset inventory portion.
All right. So I'm gonna step through each of the four levels of service in some more detail. And there are kind of assumptions and bullets on each of these six screens. This presentation was included in your packet, I believe, so hopefully everyone's got access to refer back to it if you'd like. The current costs that we have modeled here are as noted kind of based on the FY '22 operating and longer-term capital budgets. So there's kind of a five-year capital spending plan. We're escalating operating costs at kind of a modest rate and not necessarily escalating capital costs because of following projections that already exist. There's, as you'll note, there's kind of a bump in capital spending in FY '23 the way it was laid out as we kind of started this analysis. But generally, the current level of service hovers around just under $2 million in sort of FY '24 and beyond. So that's sort of our baseline scenario. I don't want to mess this up, but I wonder if we could minimize the stuff that everyone else can see. Okay, thanks. Level of Service C, again, kind of a step up from there. We're looking at increasing the operational side of things by adding one crew and one new back truck in FY '24. We're also bumping up the cost share program a bit and the capital spending a bit. The watershed planning and asset inventory that's modeled in Level of Service C totals about $2 million over the kind of five-year planning period that we're looking at FY '23 and beyond. And it accounts for evaluating about half of the city. So kind of looking at priority areas agreed upon with staff. And then doing an asset inventory of about 80% of the known assets. So it's not totally comprehensive that I would kind of focus on the big, important things that are known or might be known through this process. And then, of course, a capital plan would be developed for the portions of the city that were studied. And, you know, just to not to leave anything hanging, we sort of imagined at the end of this effort, there would be a plan put in place to sort of complete the watershed planning and asset inventory effort in a longer timeframe. Level of Service B includes the same increase to the operating budget that one crew and that new back truck. Also includes some additional funding for capital projects and for the cost share programs. And importantly, it also includes one additional staff member to serve as a project manager for those capital projects to kind of help facilitate their execution. Watershed planning and asset inventory that we have projected under Level of Service B encompasses the whole city and, but still spends some kind of additional effort on higher priority areas. The asset inventory component is still limited to about 80% of the identified structures. And with that sort of additional information, a capital plan would be developed for the entire city. Again, with the sort of plan laid out for completing asset inventory into the future. And that, that sort of level of service for the watershed planning and asset inventory is about $4 million over the five-year period. Plus, but not least, Level Service A includes two new crews and a new back truck. So that would really be sort of the most, the biggest jump to kind of a more proactive program. Even more funding for capital projects, cost share, and two project managers to manage those capital projects. It includes the most comprehensive watershed planning and asset inventory approach, totaling about $5.5 million over the five-year planning period. So that would be kind of looking at the entire city in a pretty good amount of detail and coming up with a comprehensive plan to move forward. So in consultation with staff, we have recommended Level of Service B, which is kind of the best balance between kind of tackling that watershed, planning an asset inventory effort over a reasonable timeframe at a reasonable level of detail. It does include the entire city. And Level Service B also includes kind of a, I think, a manageable increase to the operational side of things, as well as a moderate increase in capital spending with that person to help manage those projects. So it's kind of a nice balance there. And I suppose at this point, I'll just pause for a moment to see if there are any questions or immediate feedback.
Just one question with Bob and Amy with Level of Service B. There's 100,000, is that what's put in the 50-50 program after the first year, is that right?
Right now, it's 50,000.
Yeah, right now, it's 50,000. I believe this would increase that.
To 100?
Yeah.
Is that enough? I mean, I know the feedback that council's received and some conversations that we've been involved in, you guys see it a lot more than we do. We just hear the ones that come before us. That just doesn't seem like enough.
No, it's not enough. What that number, right number really would be hard to estimate. But we certainly have plenty of needs across the city that we could implement. Part of that ability to do that more quickly and more, in addition to the funding, would be probably have that project manager slash engineer that can kind of take those in front of it.
If we, if it's comprehensive for the entire city, but we focus on the high priority areas, I believe that we'll get ahead of it a little bit and maybe not need as much.
I think that's the goal.
That's the goal.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm just, I'm, I think I'm a little lost here. The watershed planning is the assessment that we're going to do to find out where water is going? Is that what that means? When we're talking about assessing the permeable and non-permeable areas, is that what we mean by that, or is it something altogether different?
So we've done the assessment of permeable and impermeable areas. The watershed planning is more drainage-based and by drainage-based and a more focused look and review of how water is moving through that drainage area, what pipes are there, whether there may be some undersized that need upsized for this replace because it's more not infrastructure, and also to identify those needs that are out there that are, you know, kind of the more larger regional type projects that we may undertake. And also to look at water quality improvements in each basin.
Water quality as well?
Yes, that would be a component of anything that we do.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anyone else with a statement? Ben, I've got a few slides on the stormwater fee rate structure revision. Again, the kind of industry standard basis for a stormwater fee is impervious area. So those are, of course, the kind of the hard surfaces on a property that cause water not to be able to infiltrate into the ground. Instead, it runs off the property and ultimately ends up in the city's stormwater infrastructure. The way these rate structures are most commonly set up is to have kind of a unit of service that's tied to the typical amount of impervious area on a single-family residential property. So we measured a sample of about 400 single-family residential properties to see how much impervious surface area is on each one and figure out what that typical amount is. I'll show you the results in the next slide. And we also measured all the impervious surfaces on every other type of property throughout the city. So the single-family residential is what SFR stands for. Those properties had a median impervious area value of about 2,950 square feet, which puts you kind of right in line with your neighbors and peers, which is good. We have been using that result, 2,950, as our unit of service, which we refer to as the equivalent residential unit or ERU. That's the term you will see in a slide or two. So this is kind of the distribution of results, the median right there at 2,950. So just a, like a quick summary of what the proposed rate structure might look like. Again, an impervious area basis, simplified rate structure for single-family residential properties. So the simplest approach is to charge every single-family residential property for one ERU. I know the rate per ERU, we'll talk about in a moment. And then to charge all other types of properties a multiple of that, as Mr. Patterson said. So if a non-single-family residential property has two ERUs worth of impervious area, they would be charged kind of two times that rate per month. We, as mentioned, did look at a number of implementation alternatives. The kind of basic approach would just be to implement a new rate structure in one shot, probably at the beginning of FY '24 potentially. But we also have some other options to complement the impact to some of those larger rate payers. And those could be things like capping non-single-family fees at a certain ERU threshold, phasing in that increase for some of the larger properties over time, or combining those two approaches to kind of pull that impact. So the punchline, Level of Service B, if we just implemented the new rate structure as designed without any of those alterations, would, Levels for Few would be able to be funded by a rate of about $6 per ERU per month. So that means every single-family property would be charged $6 compared to the current 7. And non-single-family properties would be charged something more, well, $6 or something more, depending on their amount of impervious area. Providing one of those cap or phase-in alternative approaches to implementing the rate structure change would either mean rates are higher or there's a funding shortfall. So there is a personal consideration there. And just to put it in perspective, if we're talking about an estimated $6 per ERU monthly rate, we've got a couple of sample properties here that, these, of course, are measured, non-single-family residential properties within the city. measured, non-single-family residential properties within the city. I'll start over at the right. There's a relatively small commercial property that's got six ERUs worth of impervious area on it. So their monthly fee would be six times, that's six dollars on that, or thirty-six a month. A medium commercial property, that's a car dealership, with fifty-nine ERUs, that would be three hundred fifty-four dollars a month. And then on kind of the, the pretty large side, a property with three hundred forty-six ERUs, whose monthly fee would be two thousand sixty-seven dollars a month at, if, you know, full rate. I think it's important to show kind of the distribution of those non-single-family properties and their ERU values. So what we're showing here is kind of the number of non-single-family properties on the Y-axis and the number of ERUs measured for each one on the X-axis. So importantly, I think the vast majority of those non-single-family properties are on the small side. They're, you know, ten ERUs or less. But there are some that are pretty large.
So recognizing that that's potential impact there, that's why we have the suggestion that there's possible ways to mitigate that, either through capping or implementing that speed structures over time to, to get to, to where any program is funded.
Yes. Thank you. All right. So that, all of that kind of brings us to where we are in the project now, you know, pending some, some feedback from you all on the Level Service and that implementation plan. Where we believe we're going from here is some outreach to both non-single-family residential property owners and the general public. And the, the message to those groups is similar in a lot of ways, but I think there's some nuanced stuff that we want to make sure that each group is receiving and being able to weigh in on. So the, the non-single-family residential focus is really on kind of the equity of a rate structure change and transition toward the industry standard approach. Discussion of Level Service enhancements, especially as it kind of relates to the quality of land, water control and whatnot here in the city. And potential opportunities for mitigating that great impact as we discuss. And then the general public's goal is really to get kind of input or feedback on the Level Service enhancements and again, talk more about that equity in the transition. So I think that was all of the slides I hoped to cover. I think there might be a few more in your packet, but we've covered all the material in a little bit of a talking discussion.
So Bob, for clarity, you're, you guys are wanting to have this direction from us. How do you roll this out?
Yeah.
Have we, have we looked at an inventory of, obviously, when you look at the sample impacts, large commercial properties, you're going to be getting tremendous. What is our inventory? Do we have, how many of us?
Yeah, the, the distribution, that slide that Jen showed, that has, you can pull that back up.
Yeah. It's going to be like this.
So this is a snapshot of the total number of non-single families, any of the, the non, non-residential properties. So on the very far left, there's three hundred and eighty-eight, that are the equivalent of one single-family residence. On the far right, there's one property that is approximately five hundred and fifty single-family residences. So.
Okay.
Just eyeballing it, there's beyond fifteen, there's fifteen, the equivalent of fifteen single-family residences. If you add up all those, rest of those bars, that's maybe three hundred, four hundred properties. And I think the total number was.
I have to pull it out to grab it, I'm sorry.
So at five hundred and fifty ERUs, they'd pay three thousand dollars a month?
Potentially.
And if it was six dollars.
Right.
And, and I don't think any of us here expects to, to have a dual issue such that.
So is it feasible to have a cap and blend up to it? Have it escalate up to a time?
Yes, I think you said some sort of, here is what the ultimate max fee will be until we get, until we reach that point, and then you implement that increase over three or five years, recognizing that you don't fully fund your program and reach your full, full potential of that double service until you get built up to it.
For, for reference, if we set a cap at a hundred ERUs, meaning every property bigger than that would be discharged for a hundred, there would be sixty-three properties that kind of benefit from that policy. That, you know, we can set a cap wherever it feels appropriate, that's kind of the benchmark.
I might have missed this, but what, what percentage of our program is funded now by the fees? Is it fully funded? Yeah, a hundred percent of our stormwater fund, uh, program is funded by the current fee structure.
Okay.
That includes meeting all of our, the six minimal measures for the stormwater permit and the limited number of, of projects that we can do. And building some capital reserves to, to take on some of the larger culvert replacements and such, not, uh, infrastructure replacements.
It's just not applicable.
Yes.
Based on, yeah, we grow in needs of, of the city across the impervious surface, which is going to get more and on that.
Yeah, so in, on the water and sewer side, we've had a, a utility structure in place for years and years, and we've been able to build that, that reserves and that capacity to replace infrastructure. Whereas the stormwater program, we've, we've still, we've had stormwater infrastructure for years, but that we've never really had that mechanism to go in and replace whatever may be failing and also, at the same time, you know, relatively recently, we've had these new stormwater requirements that have now been in place almost fifteen years, twenty years, that we have to, to, to build that program to, to address.
And you think that fee structure does that?
Well, this fee structure is more equitable, so it's, it's kind of bringing in funding from property owners on the basis that they sort of contribute to the city's costs. And it has potential to bring in a lot more revenue, just, you know, because we're moving from the account-based seven dollar a month charge to that ERU basis. And there's, as you can see, some pretty large properties out there.
So, so some, some form of this, this type of ERU structure could be implemented that would get us moving in that direction, build, build that revenue and, and build the programs that will even address, you know, to fund, to fund the staffing, equipment needs and capital, et cetera.
So somewhere in this, there was projection, obviously, we don't know what all the costs are, but at the six-dollar basis, there was projection of revenue for the operations within the city, is that not correct, for you or for you?
Yes, the six dollars is kind of lines up with that Level of Service B. So that's a, a, a small enhancement over the existing operational side of the program, one new crew and one new back truck, and then some additional funding for capital projects.
So our present fee is seven dollars, right?
Yes.
So what would seven dollars be for us?
Well, the seven dollar fee is on a per-account basis. So seven dollars on a per-ERU basis would, you know, of course, bring in a, a little bit more revenue above that Level of Service B rate. It would, even six dollars brings in a little bit extra for, I think we had a note in here, you can put a little bit toward time and operating reserve fund, but, but I think the seven dollars would either allow you to accelerate the watershed planning and asset inventory or put more toward capital projects. You know, I think that would.
There's two ways to get there.
The current seven dollar fee, fee structure funds about one point two million, one point three million for stormwater, but somewhere in that, that range.
One, three. I mean, it's, you, it's kind of semantics a little bit. You can do six or seven, but the real question is where are you going to cap it?
Yeah.
Sure.
Because if you move the cap, it's in essence the same thing. The, the single-family homeowner is going to see a dollar reduction for the most part. Isn't that right, based on? But we're going to a more equitable program where those that have the biggest impact are going to pay a larger share with the potential cap, wherever we draw that line at. The other thing to keep in mind is this is an enterprise fund fee, so this will even affect nonprofits, those who are not, you know, typically pay taxes, isn't it right?
Yes, this is a fee and not, not a tax. It's applied to all, all properties.
But it is now.
Yes.
It's a seven dollar. Yeah, it is now. I, I read my point is that I, I don't think we're different in any of the cities in state. This is only going to be more expensive.
It's only going to get worse.
It'll get worse.
More, more difficult.
Absolutely. So, you know, I, again, I, I don't, I don't want to, to raise fees so much, but I just, I don't see this, I think you've got to be realistic enough to get it, if we're going to go to this route and attempt to determine what our objectives are. And I think some of those objectives needs to be some, some, you know, staffing, then passing capital projects that we really need for our tasks. And kind of work back from that somewhat, because this is not a real life. And if this is an opportunity to, to do this, and I think the, the capping of the, the ERUs for larger areas is certainly an effort to not go in, I can, you know, I can understand that some property, some retail property now has got substantial ERUs and, and, and some of that property is not being used at the highest level.
Right.
And it's going to hurt really, it's going to put, you know, it's going to put some challenges on them. But I do think it's, we also got to look at what's, what's the big picture down the road when a, you know, a storm comes up and what we see, and we see the flooding that we have in certain areas that needs to be fixed. My, my point goes back to, I think maybe it's not been in pursuit now, was the project we had in front of us two years ago over on, over, and where that, how far that water came, where it started, and where it ended, and what it would take to somehow control it. And none of that was going to be cheap. I don't know what the final total was going to be, but it certainly wasn't going to be cheap, was it?
No, that was, I think, approached a million dollars by our corporate.
Well, that's why I think we got to take a look at how we set this up and know that there's going to be more of those and, and then obviously, you know, we've got to be conscious of what we charge our residents. But in the very same sense, we've got to be realistic in terms of what the expectations may be, what we have to do. Well, part of that, to your point, Harold, is the watershed planning, if we're going to go drainage basin by drainage basin, basin, and look at it and how water moves and where we can improve it, part of that area was because it was just designed, defined when it was fifty years ago or whatever it was, and those just design standards are not equitable for the amount of water moving through it now. So that's exactly what you're talking about doing in that process. So if we take the, if we take this study and say, all right, the six dollars per ERU is a good number, the question then becomes where are we going to cap it and how long are we going to take to ramp it up? Is that, and obviously, there's, there's got to be some communication, especially with the people that are going to impact, the impacted mothers. Is that something that we should go through that process and have a conversation after that? Because we're picking, we'd be giving arbitrarians a path now and just saying, all right, let's do this. But if we used a hundred and we used a five-year ramp up, how would that look? And then is that what we should be going and talking to the community about as we get the feedback?
What's the ramp up period? We, we've talked about a cap. What do you think would be a fair ramp up? Uh, we've talked about three years, five years.
Yeah, those are the two, two things we follow. I think if you went with a five-year, you know, it'll be a long while before you're, you're sort of making a big impact to the program. But.
But it would be better than where we're at.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yes. It gives a roadmap to, you know, for, for us to get there and it would build the program over time so that we could be more responsible.
I mean, I would be personally more inclined to a five-year plan because of the fact that everyone's struggling with inflation, supply chain disruptions, labor shortages. And that looks like that's going to be there for the next eighteen months even. I've seen some forecast say two years. So by stretching it out a little longer, it's not going to do anything for us immediately, but we've got to be aware, hyper-aware, hypersensitive that there are other things that the biggest, those industrial or commercial properties, large and medium, certainly are going to be impacted tremendously.
Yeah, and we certainly recognize that and we want to work with them however we can. And there may be ways that we can work with these larger properties to help them remove some impervious area that's not needed, to maybe incentivize them to put in some stormwater measures where there aren't any. There, you know, there are different ways that you can also help to mitigate that, but that's part of that program development that we're not at that point. But certainly, I think we could, you know, we, we do need to take this information, have some discussions with some of these larger properties and non-commercial properties and get some feedback, instruct a feedback. We don't want to turn into a, an overreaction.
Right. Bob, on a new project, let's just say a, what do we say, water runs down here, settles and holds. Okay. When a developer comes to us with a project that's up the hill, that, and, and let's just say it's a, it's a, that's an actual project, let's just be saying, let's say it's maybe not just single family, it's still single family, but maybe it's a shared parking lot type, type development above a hill, on a hill where it runs back down, and you've got existing residents down, down, you know, beyond that. What are any, do we, how do we approach them in terms of stormwater controls and in terms of when they begin to submit their plans in an effort not to build a substantial amount of water down that affects everyone else? I mean, do we, do we do anything like that in a fee structure with them or a design process? How's, how's that, how's that look?
So when projects come in through the development process, once they reach TRC, we begin to look at that and, and we have the ability through the ordinance, they have to meet minimum stormwater thresholds if they disturb more than an acre on their project. And then those, those requirements are spelled out by the state's, state's design manual, minimum design criteria, and they have to meet certain, certain design storm requirements. We can, through our ordinance, we We can, through our ordinance, we have the ability, when we recognize that there are potential issues downstream, ask, ask the developers to provide a, a study. And in fact, I think we call it, just like a traffic impact study, we call it a stormwater impact studies, impact analysis in some sort. That we can ask the developer to provide that to us and then review that. And if, you know, if we agree or disagree, they may have to implement some, some more comprehensive measures than the minimum requirement to help mitigate that, that stormwater quantity.
And that really is, in essence, the current process for watershed planning that we're talking about having to go back and fix from how things have evolved from the past many years ago where they're at today.
Can some of these larger ones build devices that would reduce their monthly fee? Yeah, I think that, that could certainly be built into the, the fee structure to kind of incentivize that on these, a lot of these properties that have a lot of impervious area weren't, were built prior to their being requirements. So if they can go back and retrofit their properties to reduce impervious area, capture and treat runoff, reduce that, you know, reduce that peak flow, then that, that could certainly be built into the, into the stormwater fee structure. And, and ones that have already built stormwater ponds, they get no break from this or it's on how you set up a fee structure or?
Potentially they could do whatever. They're advised, they can come back to get some credit. Yeah, we haven't proposed a specific credit figure yet, but we're certainly not prepared.
You mean somebody that's recent, that just recently did.
Yeah, just, you know.
Did it, did it by the standards.
Yeah.
Yes, certainly.
Do we have any kind of projection, I mean, as we speak now? And this will be over a number of years, obviously, this is kind of a raw question of, of really what kind of expense we're facing with, with existing issues right now that can create substantial, substantial flooding?
We don't really have a, a number on that. You know, we have, we have known areas, but we don't have that good inventory or, or capital numbers for that. And that would be part of this.
And what to do to, so they would become high priority?
Yeah, they, they would certainly.
We all, we all know that some areas, it's, it's commonplace. So if we, if we took a, a, a kind of a thoughtful position, at least mentally, if we were going to cap it at a hundred ERUs and a five-year ramp up and start modeling the conversation to have, is that what you're looking for tonight?
Yeah, I, I think there's some direction that, you know, and we can work with that and also with some options. We can then reach out to these, some of these larger commercial properties and have some, some discussions with them and bring back that information.
How would everybody feel about that? I still got the people on speed, the oddies, additional people just to echo that.
For feedback?
Yes. I think that's, that's, that's a good beginning. I mean, yeah, we've got to, I think, you've got to educate people what we're doing because some people only can see this issue. They just see the creep, let's just say it's far. You know, this is a serious issue. It is it. It's just, yeah.
Well, one thing is don't get shocked. A lot of folks get up against it. The education of this will be very important. Just to make one comment on what we've got both, you know, given our votes, I think a ramp up period, five years would be good. Anything less than that, I, I think it'd be good overwhelming.
So if we, if we took the five-year ramp up as kind of a good definitive timeframe, then based on the feedback, we could get some idea of what we think that cap would need to look like. And then you guys could come back to us with a little more concrete information. Is that what we're, we're shooting for?
At this point, you think the, think the cap, you get up your gut to five years, would the cap go up a little bit, come down? Just if you were guessing like at this point?
Yeah, I could put the model in their inventory. I mean, pretty easy for you to, to run, tell you specifically of, of changing that, that cap, playing on that, how many properties will be affected. It's very similar to how they presented the level of service options. Of course, they can give us different ideas and scenarios if we, we cap it.
Well, we'll, we'll be getting that. I was just, I was just wondering, you know, for, you know, where we thought it might fall. And I'm sure it will be impacted obviously.
Bob, could you give us the information if we took a five-year ramp up? And let's just say it was a hundred. What that would look like to compare to our current budget?
Yeah, we could fork up those figures and, and maybe bring it back next month.
Yeah.
And then that way we'll have a little more information.
In that way, we're kind of can see if that's going to be impactful. We may find out definitely. We're completely off base in what direction to go. Because the ultimate goal is to increase our current budget so we can increase service. We can increase service to service. So, all right, is that good?
And I, I guess one thing too, that I, I think is very much inside to, to create some equity here. You know, this whole process, hopefully it goes, you know, just a flat fee is what we're going to done.
Look at that. So Bob, does that give you your marching orders?
Yes.
Okay. Good. Anything else on that seven? Anybody running good groups or? Thank you all. We'll move on to item B, our annual action plan for fiscal year 2022, 2023 for CDVG and home funding discussions. So at this time, we'll call on Michael Blair with the TRC Community Development. Hey, Michael. Good to see you first. Yeah, I was in person after.
And this is Paris, Abby Smith. She has been here two days a week since September.
Okay.
It's not the welcomes. And actually, to answer Jim's question, we've been doing this. We started, I think, in July of 2020 since the midst of COVID and everything was by Zoom. And this is our first time here in a work session. So it's actually good to see everybody in person. I am Michael Blair, P. Michael, Regional Council. This is Aris Pet, Abby Smith. She is acting kind of as the CD administrator here to give a leak. And we're open specifically on CDVG and the home program. Are you ready? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for bringing our, our team members back in. There we go. So basically, this is almost identical to what you had last year. The winters out of it. This is just a summary of the annual plan for CDVG. Grant, it says 471-576, which is what this year's grant was because I have not released the 2022 numbers yet. And then go up, and then down, we don't know. So we're always told just to use the prior year. We have what's called program income. That is from past loans. And as you all know, the housing market has been pretty hot just about everywhere and people are refinancing and sold. So we've got some more program income than we normally get. So program income goes back into program for CDVG activities. So the total is about 683,000. Administration, that's what we do, plus staff. There's me, Sam's right there, who's, works in our CD department too, or division, pays for all that. Any other consults that we use, any other plans, anything like that. I'm, I'm, in that nature. Public facilities and infrastructure, that's like the parks, projects that we've done, sidewalks and things that basically are a part called low and moderate incoming areas that we can certify for HUDs and then we're using the, the CDVG funds in an area that they're eligible to use them and for a project or activity they're eligible for. Moving down, public services, that's capped at 15% of any grant can, is, is public services. If you remember the last couple of years, there were more public services than 15% because the cap was raised. And so it was a little bit higher because that was a COVID rule that's no longer in effect. So we kept that 15%, where it says the 31,000 of program income right behind that, that's 15% of program income. So when you look at, if you have a hundred thousand dollars of program income, just like the regular CDVG, you can take 20% for admin. You can have 15 maximum percent of public services. And the rest can be infrastructure or rehab or anything else that's a CDVG, CDVG or a collectivity. We'll get into the public facilities and the special public services here in a second. The next item is emergency repair rehab. It seems like a small amount, but we have a lot of houses that either are weatherization permits that the TRC has or the city's CDVG jobs or the home program. There's almost always something that, you know, maybe a roof that can be done that wouldn't be done otherwise or HVAC. Two or three of those, we got about 20,000 dollars pretty easily to replace one or something. Relocation assistance, we didn't fund that last year. We should have actually, but that, that basically helps. If we're rehabbing a house, it has to have substantial rehabilitation. The floors are being taken out from the termite damage or there's lead work being done and they have to be out of the house for a certain period of time. This pays for relocation for household during rehab program that's being done on their house. Then that's just a breakdown. Okay, there we go. That just breaks down what I just said.
20% towards administration, the 15% towards public services.
Oh, the program income. Thank you. This angle is not very good, so whoever's doing this last, I understand. All right. And then the last part of this is the home program. Again, same numbers as last year. The home program is administered by Arlington, but basically for the city of Greensboro, is the lead jurisdiction for home consortium. It includes Dover County, Almanzt County, Burlington and Greensboro. These are the amounts that are broken down by percentage, which you can find on the homepage side, which gives a percentage of four consortiums. So that's how they break it down every year and put it into a pot, basically, for these types of activities. We've got, again, it first says CDO, that's community housing development organizations. That is a part of the home program. It's very difficult. Almanzt County Community Services had been a CDO for this program several years ago. I don't think they've been certified for the last couple of years. We need to find another nonprofit that's in housing development that can meet those CDO requirements so we can meet that requirement of the program over the next couple of years. And basically, the funds broken down in, you know, rehab is very common use for our loan programs, the Almanzt County, the, inside the city of Burlington. And then again, CDO assistance up. We need to actually have, try to achieve 15%. Sometimes you can go over and that counts for the next year. But this last year, we haven't had any because there weren't any CDOs to actually fund for this round, this last round. Home program match, let me just talk about that real quick. It requires 25% match and there's usually a match law that's built up over time for different projects, from either volunteer powers that are put into a half a pack house, accountable to match, non-cash contributions to projects. There's also something called a couple of home loan bank, which is an Atlanta law of tax credit properties. Go get that, that money from them as a grant that counts as match for the whole program. And Greensboro, because that's part of it, technically the match is for the entire consortium. So if we're below, it's covered. All right, let's go to the next slide. Let me actually pull this up here.
Michael, before you leave that screen, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Do I, and you correctly got the CHDO money that's in that budget is not allocated anywhere.
No, no, money is just allocated. Actually, last year, I forgot to bring that up. What we'll do is generally for affordable housing development, we bring any projects that either come in unsolicited or through RFP process, if they're vetted and they are uneligible, we can bring those back to council for approval. For CDO assistance, we need to get, I think, over the next few months, somebody to certify this one. So, and, and generally, anybody that's building houses for low-income homebuyers, generally with their nonprofit 501(c)(3) generally fit themselves into that category. So that'll be the next kind of project that you have to go home program and try and get that taken care of.
Thank you.
And then, you're sharing the word document. So hit stop and reshare. All right, so here you have the infrastructure projects for this current year. As you see, the, the staff went through a process of looking at projects at their viability, their, I don't want to say shovel readiness, but, but their ability to get going relatively quickly and, and fitting into the pot that we have available for the funding. And so you have the restroom project. We have this more in count stormwater infrastructure in here. That, we have to do a survey for the area to find out if it actually qualifies as a low and moderate income benefit. We haven't done that yet, so if you do that survey and it does not show that's low and moderate income, we cannot do that project. But that'll probably be done over the next 30 to 60 days, I hope. We've acquired fiber buildout, security cameras. Done a lot of work in North Park over the last couple of years. A tremendous amount of the lights, the new lights have been out, the dugouts have just gone in. The trail is starting, a new trail is going to go in here shortly. And then next one is North Main sidewalk between North Church Island, $40,000, St. Gate Dream Center bathrooms and parking lot. Let me just say, okay, you've got infrastructure, which is sidewalk. You've got infrastructure, which is basically public services and that's the bathrooms and parking lot for St. Gate. And like, there's a name for it that is escaping right now, but it basically is a public service. So you can build the, the physical part of a public service, like a restroom or something like that, so to the public, not the services coming out. This is funding the service coming out, it's funding the actual physical building. And Salvation Army was a last minute, I think, sort of added. We went through a process this year requesting, requests for funding through people that had funded the prior year. Just, we didn't know everybody that was always going to be interested, but we found out later on that Salvation Army wasn't interested. So we did put that into the pot as well. And as you see, there are three items that we're not necessarily recommending, but they're there. Ruby Lane is interesting. That first phase is actually starting like this week, I think. And then phase two completes that. And then the North Park, Phase 2B, Section 2, which is the, we actually have that. Section 2, let's look on that real quick. That's going, that's finishing off all the trails, I think, in North Park that will exist. That will be probably one of the best equipped parks, at least in this part of the, the state, I would think. So back to the summary. So that, that's where we are. I don't know if anybody wants to talk about any of these projects or is there any interest in them or?
Yeah, we're looking for consensus. We're recommending the ones with, with the red council, like the shifts and things around, it's funny.
Where is Smith's restroom?
It's the city bar.
City bar number two, Baltimore. Probably dollars.
And that's a replacement.
Yes, over 50 years old.
Yeah. On set of tang.
That's been, it's been converted.
It was on set of tang.
It was on set of tang.
Okay.
City Gadget, where's that?
It's North Church. It's the old Pepsi.
The old church, yeah.
Old Pepsi. It's a great facility.
They do a great job, they really do. They do a great job there, they really do.
Yeah, their indoor soccer facility is amazing. If you ever have a chance to go there, you can actually throw yourself on it, it's just like grass, but close. But that's, it's a great project. We've done other improvements to that facility over the last couple of years, so it's served a lot of people that, especially youth in the area.
Greensburg facilities at North Park. Ruby Lane, I believe that.
It's like what animal shelter is, Ruby Lane's right there in front of the animal shelter. So there's a path that takes you down to the end of Ruby Lane and what the council approved the CBG last year was to cut a mulch pad through the woods down through the Hall River. That's what Todd's got a project going right now to get that done. This Phase Two would be to pave that surface, but we feel like that can hold off because we're running on a mulch surface for a while and let's get some use out of that.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense. So really, the only one in question is the Moreton Town stormwater and we've got to, is that what I heard you say, that we've got to?
Have to turn it around.
Yeah.
And remember, when you look at the annual action plan, you know, five buckets, infrastructure was one of them, so you're third in the buckets and given us consensus on the projects for this. The good thing about doing the buckets is, you know, if something goes over under, we can shift as needed. And what we've seen in the last few years is things tend to come in a little higher than what we anticipated, so it's good to have a little bit of leeway in there.
The only thing that came in lower was the Ruby Lane, I mean, right now.
Really?
Yeah, and everything else has been 15, 20% higher than the original estimates.
So I think the target list that you guys have presented is all the cap, I think, is pretty good.
And you can see we have a contingency there and that will probably, I don't know, we're not going, I'm sure something will need.
If we have, if something changes or if a survey comes back and it doesn't really make the LMI or whatever it is, will you come back to us with another project or?
We'll probably see how these projects shape and do we need to use that a bit. If not, you know, we can always come back and talk.
Hello, who will they install more infrastructure for them being for them now?
Amy and Bob can speak to this the best, but it's basically, you know, reworking some ditch sections and driveway culverts.
Yeah, at one of our council meetings, there were some residents came with some concerns. The ditches have filled in over time, the driveway culverts are decomposing or clogged and need replaced, but the residents can't afford. And we have a program where the city will pay, will install a property owner by the pay, so this is an effort to help improve that situation. It would be, this would just be a portion of it, it wouldn't be the whole. We would anticipate going back to another project if this were successful. All right. Any other questions about the infrastructure part? Does everybody deal with that? Next is the public services.
Kathy, can you see that, public services?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So basically, you've got, very similar to last year, and you've got proposals, requests that came out and $131,000, we have 102 available, we break that down proportionally to bring everyone, request down to where it was originally asked for. And then you have another set of columns on the right side, and that's basically $44,000. That was to the impact Alman's youth violence initiative. To that for a lot of reasons, just I think needs to, I believe needs to be reallocated. And your two options, whether even distribution between all of the grantees, because it's $44,000, it just gets split up amongst, was it nine or nine? Or more towards youth-oriented programs because that was originally used violence prevention money, and that's really sort of just trying to gauge your desire for that.
I would like to see it centered around youth.
So the youth-oriented basically funds everybody at 100% of their requests because there's enough funds, and then the balance that's left over is split evenly along City Gate Dream Center with their youth efforts and positive activity for youth.
And that's in that last column?
That's the last column.
Yeah.
And so that's, yeah.
And I think that sort of keeps us on track with that line.
Yeah.
The kids get everything, yeah. Okay, so we'll make that as a focus in the plan somewhere.
Everybody do the gap?
Children Development Corporation. Daycare, alien, live individuals.
Girls.
Girls Development Corporation.
Okay, that is Housing Forty's nonprofit, I believe, right? Paris, if I can speak to that.
Well, they assist with daycare for low-income families, so they requested $25,000 for this coming year.
And the healing station and the resource station?
They are new applicants and then the Salvation Army's also, they are new applicants for this year.
So the healing station is, or is that just a nonprofit?
Yeah.
Or?
It's been around for about 10 years or more and then it was a 501(c)(3). They, I believe, expressed interest last year, but weren't able to fund them. I remember seeing an application, but basically they help low-income families with different materials, if they've, let's say, lost jobs or need others, you know, this isn't for the children, for school supplies, it's a whole, it's really the whole basket essentially for me, it's the first low-income families I have issues with either new adults or paying for children's activities.
Any other questions? Bobby, you with that?
Last column.
Last column.
Last column.
Yep.
You for eight. All right. And then, I guess, the home program balance, I want to talk about that, as I mentioned, we're in the home program, the Greensboro, as a lead entity. Again, program income, which is that whole loan being paid off because somebody sells house and, you know, all sorts of reasons for them paying off those loans now, is a good chunk of change at this point. We need to get the money from the community and experiment in a timely way, you know, because of that annual funding. And also, I can say, because, you know, Forest Hill Meadows was funded last year as well as a housing project for rehabilitation, both are going forward, but they've went forward a lot slower than I'd hoped they would. You know, COVID has slowed a lot of things down, but also the environmental review process will slow down for the spring and just in general, it's been difficult to get things going, but they are moving forward. Once they get forward, my, our balance goes down, but that hasn't happened yet, so. You know, the RFP that we did in late 2020 was Forest Hill Meadows and PHA, that was actually $495 when it was a PHA property. They're doing what's called grad conversion, they're converting all their public housing into the private ownership, and we're going to help them regain one of those properties. That's $495. That grad conversion should happen, I think, in August now, that's what my understanding of it is, but it's a different animal that we're used to dealing with. And then the $638,000 for Forest Hill Meadows, and that's a tax credit project, making it units. Hopefully, we'll have a contract signed in the next week or two.
How many units is that?
Eighty-eight.
So what kind of property did you say, Michael?
A low-income housing tax credit property, but it's got an income mix that includes, I think, some 80% of what are considered for a force unit in it. Your funding, or the city of Greensboro's funding, the Greens, the Burlington, because this project will be guaranteeing some lower income units, and it's going to end up being a very nice property. I mean, it's a great location, it's just, it'll work out really, once it's open, it's going to be a very pleasant place to live and keep some prices down, which I know, you look at rents anywhere, here, anywhere, it doesn't matter. Our chicken could work in this little dampened out a little bit, but it does have a high-quality product.
So that's a tax credit program, is that a different bucket of money?
That's for the state. Yeah. What home program money is used for in a lot of places is called gap financing. What that does is it's basically recurring a drawdown of the tax credits so they don't take as many of the tax credits as they would without the home fund, which is more expensive financing. So you go to rent down further here and have a lot of lower rent, that's a service coverage ratio because of the home money.
So Mike, what project you mentioned there for CDO? Excuse us a little, we're being tuned here for a year and a half. Help me on the total number of units in that particular project?
Eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight, yeah. The, that is rental or purchase?
They're all rental.
All rental. Okay, how many of those rentals would be at what you call market value?
None, although if you look at the 80% rents, the rents on tax credit, they're not that far off from what you would get and what you call naturally occurring affordable housing in Burlington. Those rents aren't that much different, but what you have is brand new and managed professionally, which is just a different environment.
So what is the rental formula in terms of, they still just on income in terms of what people can pay?
It's based, no, it's based on the, started with the adjusted median income for the county and working its way down to 80%, 50%, 30%. So your investment's going to guarantee some 50% units and 65% units for 20 years.
Okay, but who determines what number of units we build in what particular machine is there?
The developer submits an application to the state that has that mix in it, which kind of follows a formula. But here, I can't really speak too detail on tax credit applications, I've never done it myself.
Yeah, that was a significant project and that's really a lot more important.
Yeah, that's 80% units are considered for $4,000, but we guarantee some lower income units in there too.
That's right.
And we, we have.
Public hearing.
So that's what Andy actually planned before, how we find, so we have now, we want to talk with council about potentially another RFP.
Well, I guess what we could ask, we could have a balance, and I could, I guess, ask for just permission to do an RFP for whatever that balance is.
Before any project?
Yeah, before September, probably, my guess.
And that'd have to be certified. Are we, is that who would have to be certified, whoever you said, oh, that's?
The CDO does.
Yeah, CDO, yeah.
No, no, not CDO, but basically another RFP that was similar to what Forest Hill Meadows would, the housing and the residential property.
So how much money would you have in that?
Half of these two are taken out, a billion and a half approximately.
So we'll have all program income come into that? So like, just like last time, we've got a balance built up, it's a good time to do another RFP and just bring back what we get from council for consideration.
There are several older properties that are owned by nonprofits that are here in Arlington that were built in the 70s or 80s. That would be perfect for rehabilitation, and basically we'll contact those nonprofits and see if they'd be interested in that sort of service.
So the RFP would be for rehabilitation as opposed?
Not necessarily, that would just be part of it. If there's another, there's another tax credit property, you had unsolicited, submit an application to us. We haven't reviewed it yet though, so that might be a potential to.
Could be due to, might force them. There's an expectation that, you know, we do use the funds, we feel like that RFP process is already up, just kind of get some of those funds going, this is another opportunity to do that.
But this time it won't be another, probably grad conversion, that's what we're waiting for, so.
Yeah, I think that would be fine.
Yeah. I think we've obsolete, we're facing some challenges with voided homes and some of the residents that have voided homes, that's creating some challenges in our neckwoods. And from what I gather from talking to individuals now, the rent they pay on a monthly basis is certainly not cheap for a single woman, and some of these places, I understand, working making cooking and everything. So, you know, and honestly, not trying to, those these particular facilities or those residents are often maintained to the level we need to maintain, and quite honestly, I think it has a negative impact on some of the communities there. Not just because, not just because people are there, but really quite wrinkly now the rate of what's in charge for like individuals to stay there, we're looking for residences. So I think there's an opportunity to do some other housing that's more like a dismove, which more a control basis with the certainty, something we need to consider.
Hold it. Thank you. Public hearing for this. As public hearing, May 17th.
And as soon as that's approved, we'll get it submitted up.
Is that good, everybody put that on May 17th?
Good. Thank you. Good feedback. Another for two.
Thank you.
It was great to be here first.
Yes, it's good to see you guys. Thanks for your availability. I have a seat, we have an annexation request, voluntary contiguous, it is Zero Grand Oaks Boulevard, 112469, 177376. So this time we'll look at that, I'm planning to direct connection.
Yeah, I'm going to, it sounds to get some of the downstairs lower this.
It's the Microsoft Explorer.
I'm glad you got all. Oh, yeah. And then it's eight.
Yeah.
That's for an annexation.
We're zero at the end of the bar.
Zero.
We're on zero.
I think that was what.
How do you have a free account?
That's a, 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 that's which was approved by the Burlington City Council on March eighteenth, twenty twenty-one. And then subsequent to that, there was a technical review committee site plan that was approved for a portion of the phase development, which consisted of thirty thousand square feet of medical office space. And that was approved in June of twenty twenty-one. The applicant is now seeking annexation. It is contiguous as I mentioned, and this is for water and sewer associated with the development of the site. So this is a standalone request. It's in your purview to consider this. Staff is recommending annexation and asking for the items to be placed on the descent agenda for tomorrow night. With a resolution to set the public hearing date for May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions, Mr. Jennings?
All the way through this.
All right, moving on. I will be coming up later on, yes.
Perfect. Sure.
That's terrific, Steve, Jamie.
We'll see you in a minute.
See you later.
She said she, John, how she was coming back.
I love the fact she was taking.
She said, thank you, that's the end, it'd been great. Okay, good, all right, indeed. Physical year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget proposal presentation and twenty-two, twenty-three, CPG budget ordinance proposal. This time we'll recognize our interim city manager David Cheek and director of finance, Miss Megan Penney Rees, for a complete presentation.
Thank you, mayor, I'm going to start your reference page. First off, I just wanted to thank the budget committee. Noah Turpin here, Peggy, of course, Bob Patterson and several, if not all, the finance staff that was putting this together. A lot of work's gone into it, not only, as well as the department heads. Appreciate all their work on getting the budget together. I have shortened this thing down quite a bit. We're going to talk about the financial plan for next year. We're going to talk a little bit very short about five-year capital improvement planning. Mr. Mayor asked a little bit about general obligation bonds, we're going to hit that briefly. And then you have some surplus calling fund balance now to think about. And then if you want the bonus round at the end, we will talk about what these departments do.
And if we know what happens.
You can say at the end. Because that section could, could last for, you know, a while. All right, so the financial plan for the general fund and the water resources fund. These slides will look familiar, just like you've seen in past years. But there is no, the, the, the general fund revenues and budget are projected at sixty-nine point three million dollars. You'll see the actual figures over on the later slide. These are just the highlights. There's no property tax rates increase recommended. Our tax base is growing three and a half percent. Sales tax is twenty-six percent over last year's budget estimates. It's not quite growing that, that big because our, our revenue this year is coming in pretty strong over last year's budget. This budget includes the right recycling fee increase that the council passed, I think it was in January of this year. And it becomes effective July one. That'll produce about one point one million dollars in revenue to cover the, the new contractual costs. I, I did, do want to highlight, that's the first increase to residents in over ten years. It probably would be twelve, thirteen years, maybe you may know, but that's pretty good for holding the line as far as heading off inflation.
Was it ten-year contract?
Which was. Yeah, and that was, that was the contract of envy by many cities around the state, if it was. We are recommending to eliminate the fire inspection fees that I believe started last year. We are recommending as well to refund the people that paid those fees this year, to be fair. Because we only do a third of the people each year. So just that first third who starts the fees this year would, would get a reimbursement out of this year's budget most likely. I always like to talk about the top three revenues because they make up the bulk of all your revenues. Property tax, sales tax and permits and fees combined are eighty-three percent of your revenue. I'm going to flip, I'm going quick unless y'all stop me, okay?
I'm good with the speed.
All right, you like this?
Yeah, that's good.
We're not going to talk about this slide then. This just describes all those revenues. I think you've seen this block slide before, a lot of detail in here, I gave it to you for, to look at later maybe. General fund spending, similar slide, I would say the majority of the, the big change this year is we're investing in our employees with the raises that have been passed, that's the big change. Again, the recycling contract cost increase, we lost some care funding, which there's no change in transit costs, but we lose that. We got to pick it up from other general revenues.
We just really didn't lose it, they just are not continuing.
Yeah, yeah, yes, that's right. Your, your top three departments here are police, public works and fire, and they make up sixty-one percent of your budget. And I think, you know, police and public works are here, fires not, so if you wanted to cut these bigger budgets, you'd probably hit fire for a bit, right?
I would have rather. Dave, fire's pretty confident, aren't you?
Fire, they must be, I'll tell you why. This is all the budgets with their exact numbers for the departments. And you see police out there outpacing everybody quite a bit. Of course, with the vacancies you had, he's probably not going to spend that much. Hopefully he's going to cut that in half at least. And then you got your economic development down at the bottom, just trying to give you some perspective of where most of your money goes.
Bottom vacancy you still have. Thirty-one, thirty-one on the one side, eight professionals there.
So that's the general fund, it's, it's a, I would call it a continuation budget, a status quo budget, it's not, we're not doing any dramatic things. The highlights, while the highlights, the rest of it is, we're continuing as usual with some very minor inflationary increases. Water resource revenues, this budget is balanced at around at thirty-one point nine million dollars. We are proposing a two percent rate increase for both water and sewer. The other significant thing that impacted revenues was we lost two one-time revenues, a state grant and some interest subsidy payments. Again, you can see, you know where most of your money comes from here. Sewer rents are five million more than water rents. I mean, that, that was new to me, getting, just getting here, but I would accept them that. Spending, again, same thing, you're investing in your employees. Had a four percent increase in operating costs and some significant decreases in capital outland debt payments of over a million dollars. This budget's only increasing point three percent, like ninety-eight thousand dollars, I think, over last year's budget. Again, the department slide, I think I got these numbers right now, Bob. You got building administrative services at five point four all the way down to composting, four hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. Now here's the proposed rate increase of two percent and how it would impact a typical customer's bill. One customer at twenty-five hundred gallons a month and is in the blue on the left. And the customer with the bright green, man, that hurts my eyes, hurts my eye. That, that's at five thousand gallons per month. You'll see again, very minimal changes really in those monthly bills. Any questions there? Want to talk a little bit about the future? So I, I've been new here, I pulled all the vehicles out of the capital improvement plan. And I just gave it to you by the departments, but you can see we have significant replacement needs for vehicles. You'll see again, police leading the way with this, fire not too far behind, public works not far behind them. This, just to give you a feel for what's coming, actually, most of this funding is done through the general fund capital out by each year. I always like to look at it coming out, see if there's no big, big ones coming. Using those ladder, new ladder trucks, new fire trucks, sanitation vehicles, they're all in here, but. I think for the most part, Peggy, correct me if I'm wrong, these are getting funded, not, maybe not every year that the department had, asked for it, but for the most part, I think it's probably doing two to three. Probably two to three million dollars worth of vehicles a year with, some of them financed.
So the twenty-four funding.
Yes.
Wait, is, is that set, is that set five million, five hundred fifty-seven thousand?
Well, that's the new radios.
Oh, okay.
Which are over three million dollars.
And we paying for those.
Well, that's in next year's budget to be converted, yeah.
You got a long time to think about, Harold.
I mean, radios, Harold, we always used to, I've always financed those over a period of time, even as much as seven years, because you know what? You're going to buy them again in five or seven years.
Exactly right.
So I think that's what Peggy's probably, well, we've gone back and forth on that, so. But that's not a decision that has to be made tonight, for this, for this budget. This is your, now, I threw everything in here that I've heard about, okay? So you're going to see stuff in here like, well, renew Maple Avenue. Noah told me to put forty-six million in there.
That's what the plan says.
The plan says forty-six million, I think half of that roughly would come from the state or federal government. But I just, I want to give you an impression of what the plans are doing, some of the big expenses you're talking about. Some of these numbers are really back of the napkin or even worse, just grab a big number out of the air to just get it in there. Because I don't want you to forget about this though. Put the airport master plan in there, I don't, we haven't even reviewed that, but that's a forty-two million dollar master plan. I just showed it out in the last year. That will probably, eight percent of that probably paid for by.
FAA.
FAA, yeah, yeah. And, and I didn't do the revenue sources, or I may have the revenue sources after this that I just threw in there, but again, looking in there's Rockwood Avenue extension, new police building, Western Electric Site revitalization, Tucker Street interchange. Include increased amounts for resurfacing streets and sidewalk maintenance. The Maynard Aquatic Center is in here. Major resurfacing project, PD roadway extensions, downtown site. These are all numbers that we have in various spreadsheets tracking the status of these kinds of projects. And, and this is just showing projects that are over two million dollars. There's a ton of other projects, that bottom line is all projects under two million. I'm not trying to get into details on this, I'm just trying to give you perspective of, a perspective of two hundred and forty-seven million dollars, I guess. But you know, you, if, if these are projects we're all found to be, we've got to have them, how are you going to do it? Well, it won't be in five years most likely. But again, it, it, it never hurts to put this stuff out there just to, to know where you're at. Do you have any questions on this?
I think it's great to just show those, though, if I know exactly what numbers some of these individual projects got to go along with. And, and to, to be very honest with everybody, a lot of those projects, we'd have to have partners on them that are not committed partners.
That's right, that's right.
So from the Federal Highway Administration to the FAA to, you know, you name it. So we can, it's good to talk about projects and it's good to have them in front of you so that if that funding does come available, but, got to handle.
Yeah. Ideally, I would have, if I had more time, have an individual project sheet on each of these projects with some of the details you're talking about on there, but again, this is more just for perspective. The water and sewer fund, CIP, a hundred and fifty-nine point nine million dollars with the major project being the four point O NGB plant upgrade for the.
House program.
Yeah. But again, you can see some, some significant amounts here. I do have some revenue slides to go with, but I took them out because, again, we're not, this is not decisions you have to make now. This is for the future.
No, the downtown work, whatever, that was talked about early on with, with some AARP money or, or. Where did that, how did that, where does that stand at?
I know that the state budget, there was ten million allocated to replace water and sewer lines downtown.
Yes.
That was for the, for the.
Any other questions on this, Bob? You had asked about general obligation bonds, so I made up some more stuff. And that, you know, some projects that would be reasonable projects to put out for a bi-referendum with some, you know, numbers that again are, would need much more work put into them. This is again, just a preliminary example to consider the impacts of those bonds. And these are the, the projects and that I chose. Talking to staff and some of you, just, they're, they're just ideas at this point. So you could have a recreation referendum or transportation referendum or recreation and transportation referendum. There's all kinds of ways to do it, but you know, we quickly came up with, what, that's fifty-five million dollars of projects there. The Paramount Theater extension could be thrown in here, the YMCA Western Recreation Center. I, I, I don't even know what companies were feeding, that's just a number, okay? The Maynard Aquatic Center is a pretty good number. Synthetic soccer fields, I think that's four, four fields under a million. Somebody mentioned want to put a bubble over the tennis courts, again, I, you know, I don't know that one, where that came from, but. Uh, okay.
Not a bubble, it, not a bubble, it'd be a, a structure covered with not, not an air playing bubbles.
Okay, all right. I don't think there will be one, I'm just kidding. Transportation.
There's going to be one. Just want to clear that up before you move on.
Transportation, again, you could, the Tucker Street interchange is, would be a, a win for economic development. Street resurfacing, if you want to really catch up on some street resurfacing, we talked about that the other night. You could throw five million at it, and then there are some roadways out there that could be extended for economic development or back entrance to Macintosh. So again, fifty-five million. So let's, let's just say you had a referendum in twenty twenty-four, which would be quick. You could have three bond sales, one in twenty twenty-five, one in twenty-six, one in twenty-seven. Typically, these bonds are for twenty-year terms. I just used a rate of four percent and I projected our tax base would grow at roughly two percent. I just use a rate of four percent, and I projected our tax base would grow at roughly two percent. So you can see for the twenty-twenty-five issue, so I just said, well, that's fifteen million, I don't remember which projects it was, but that would be a one-point-one million dollar debt payment, and would be about the equivalent of two cents on the tax rate. You do another issue the following year of twenty million, it'd be a million and a half debt payment, and that's the equivalent of about two and a half cents, and that's the same as twenty-twenty-seven. But by the time you get to twenty-twenty-eight, you pitch your fifty-five million dollars, you've got roughly six million dollars in debt payments for the next seventeen years. Is that right? Yeah. And you're looking at pennies on the tax rate, as much as seven, but they start decreasing as you move out to where it only has about a two cent in dollars in the end. And to see that visually, that's what the tax rate looks like if you raise taxes for the debt payments. It starts, it's at fifty-nine point seven now, it would get as high as sixty-six point seven in twenty-twenty-seven, and gradually decrease back down to sixty-one point five. Geo bond issued timeline, usually takes about eighteen months leading up to one, and I'm not, I'm not sure what all kinds of information you have to have for each project yet. I need to do some more reading and research on that, or maybe does. But this just shows you all the steps. There's a lot of them, the notice about the patient, I'm told this process takes a good twelve months, so if you back up six to twelve months and try to get good numbers and good design development drawings for the public on what you're wanting to build, you know, it's, it's a good, good lead time to. You make a decision there, we're probably not having a referendum in twenty-four. I don't think you would, I don't think you'd do it that fast, but that's where you bring Bob, Councilman, and a consultant on the finances of it. So you get better estimates than this, this is just again, all part estimates for the impact of the GO issue.
So what would be the alternative?
The alternative? Well, I mean, you, you could take each project as it comes and do installment purchase financing under General Statute one fifty-nine something. Can't remember, I used to know that when I was finance officer. But, but you could do, you could take each project, you know, and just do it in the lift, individual financing.
Because quite honestly, the reality of it is, some of the projects that are up there, not all of those are wish list projects. Some of them are critical deep projects.
That's right, and, and.
And two years is too long.
It is, I would, I would say some of them, the time it would take you, if rates, rates have started up, okay? So you do save money rate-wise with a GO issue, it's, it's backed by the full faith and credit, so you get a lower interest rate, but by the time you get GO bonds issued, who knows what rates it's gonna be? You may be better served to do installment financing on each individual project's basis, especially the critical ones, I wouldn't wait for a referendum on critical ones. Plus, they may not pass. So if they're critical, those are ones you probably, the council needs to decide how to go forward with that.
We did the nine-point-three billion installment financing in twenty-twenty, I believe. That was Carousel was the big project, but there were some other things that we could have in there as well.
And those are fairly, much less administratively intensive than a bond referendum.
Everything has costs. Time being a significant cost.
That's right.
Imagine if we were talking about building this two years ago, and then we're just to the point that we're gonna go build it today, we couldn't do it. Would the bond have been enough money?
Sure.
Now, I have a question here, Peggy, Dave, on this installment financing, is there a term cap? Do you know what I mean, like, what is it on the Carousel bond, how, the payback period?
We did it for twenty years.
Is that typical, twenty years?
It depends on what you're financing, like, if she does installment financing on a fire truck, she may not give it ten years.
Like radios.
Or radio.
Usable life of seven years, so you don't want to turn.
The installment financing is using the estate or bond as collateral, whereas the general obligation bond is using the full faith and credit of the city of Arlington and its residents.
One, one other question, how did that get started? I know we, you know, bond or cap, you know, they are budget, you know, how would they be, what would be the cap, is that, my word, we don't have, we have a limit, that's what we can go out the bond for, right?
Well, there's a full borrowing limit, but it is, it is.
Gargantuan.
Yes, gargantuan, and we would never want to reset.
But it is not, it is not subject to the same limits as you would in the bond, but that's the question. So you borrow whatever you want, all right, they'd go, put that wish list back up.
You know, we have a surplus fund balance that we've been discussing with y'all to think about. There's ten and a half million dollars in surplus funds now that council needs to determine how to spend, is, is there a time, time on this, when?
I think it would be better for us to spend it sooner and later. We are using the police salaries, public safety salaries, in fact, we actually can use all government salaries for the revenue office replacement of the ARPA funds, but I think it would be good for us to consider what we want to spend this money on, since that frees up other monies for this other money.
And that's our line, because the reported date of the first expenditures of ARP was April thirty, which that starts that major project process rolling, but that, you know, replacement, and most, you know, tons of cities are using replacement option in terms of their use of ARP funds.
And I think staff is looking for some guidance on this, not, not tonight, but this could be part of the budget discussion, it's not included in the current budget. It's, it's just available surplus that because of the ARPA funds, it's freed up some, you know, fund balance, so again, you'll see a lot of the same projects. Again, I'm not providing any recommendations at all here, I'm just trying to gauge thought, or, you know, some of these are y'all's ideas, staff's ideas. They're by no means exhaustive, you see how we've got bullets that don't have anything beside them. I hope when you look at this later, you'll, maybe have a plan to have a work session about it sometime soon.
Is, is this, we've talked about things, and there's also items that are on our working list that might not be on this list, and Nolan, you know what I'm talking about, David may not. Could we, could we get this, link up a little bit with some of those items? And then let's look at a work session, conversation for maybe June, I mean, July?
We have a work session.
We do, but it's like a little work, isn't it?
It's like for the standard second meeting. I thought we decided on the evening, so we have a work session in the regular meeting. We don't have anything in the first month without a call, but you have the work session if you need prior to the regular.
That's right.
Third meeting.
That's right.
Rodney, this is your slide, or maybe not just your slide, but this is the end, or I can show you my bonus round slides. Nobody wants to see the bonus round slides? I mean, they were good.
I think we need to see it real quick.
No, let's cut our losses and go on.
I'll show you one of them, if, if the first one inspires you, we'll, we'll move on.
Go for it, Dave, that's fire up there.
All right, so you know, okay, let's just get. A lot of times, you talk about budget, and it's just talking about money, but it's not money. It's not about money. That money's got to pay for stuff, and thanks for what we do. I just showed you a hundred and one point two million dollars worth of costs on the Water Resources Fund and the General Fund combined, and so I asked departments to just give me some different things of what they do every year. So here's your Public Works Department, and I try to put some of this stuff in perspective, but they take the trash, two-point-five million solid waste visits per year. And Rodney, were you lying, or is that for evidence?
Correct.
So, I mean, if you take their whole budget, if you take their whole budget, that's only four dollars and fifty-six cents a visit, and they do a lot more than that. I mean, they, they pick up thirty-six hundred tons of leaves. I mean, that's a lot of leaves, and I'm not gonna get every one of these, but mowing thirteen hundred acres, five thousand land state plants and beds are maintained. Y'all know how many street miles you have. They're maintaining two hundred buildings. And then, I meant to change the slide, be a little more gentle, but they do bury two hundred and fifty of our residents every year.
With eighty-seven employees.
With eighty-seven employees, yeah. And that's just part of what they do, I'm just hitting some of the highlights. Engineering, they do a lot more than this, I didn't, I wasn't happy with this slide, I wanted more, Jackie, I wanted more.
I would have taken that.
I mean, I'm tired. Four hundred infrastructure programs, sixteen infrastructure projects designed and installed with eighteen employees. My three employees, exec care, two hundred tractors, five thousand street lights, and four thousand signs. Here's Shane, six hundred residences, site plants, fence permit, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Forty-five hundred code enforcement cases. You know, this is a lot of work, folks, I just want to remind you, the money being spent, there's people out there doing stuff, it's not just money being spent. I thought this was pretty impressive, our inspections department. They did six thousand permits and thirteen thousand inspections, that is eight-point-eight permits and inspections per employee, per working day. Just driving out somewhere, inspecting or program permit, per employee, per day. I mean, that's a pretty good pace. Fire, again, ten thousand calls, that's thirty calls a day for three hundred and sixty-five days a year. They're on the scene for those calls almost every time within five minutes. They're training a hundred and eighty hours per fireman every year. They did over two thousand inspections of facilities for free.
Give for purchase.
Yeah, and they took, they taught over six thousand residents and kids through outreach to prevent fires. The hundred and four employees. And I'm almost to the end, but I don't want to slight police. They asked to respond to a hundred and sixty-five calls for service per day. Is that right? Did I do that right? That's sixty thousand calls a year that they get for service. They, they deal with eighty-eight emergency calls per day, thirty-two thousand emergency calls. I'll slow down with the police a little bit, because this one impressed me. They get a hundred thousand non-emergency calls a year. A hundred thousand, that's eleven non-emergency calls per hour. That just scares me, I don't, I don't, I don't actually know how to answer that much. They attend community events, their arrest record is best practice by far. Ninety-nine point eight percent of the arrests are done by the law. They only had five use of force complaints out of almost three thousand arrests. Crime Stoppers Tips is up ninety-three percent. They're counseling youth and keeping them out of jail and keeping them out of being physically arrested. They're using the K-9 unit, and they seized nine hundred and ninety pounds of drugs last year, twenty-eight guns, almost four million dollars in arrests in sixty-six, the eight and, folks here. I think that was my last one. Oh no, I've got several more. Now, I love this, this illustration that Bob gave me. We got four hundred and forty miles of water line, four hundred and forty-four miles of sewer line. That's, that's water lines all the way to Philadelphia. That's a ten-hour drive, non-stop, sixty-five miles an hour and E.
How much gas do you think we need to drive?
Well, I don't know, he doesn't drive, he doesn't drive that fast.
I got a Jeep, if I can go back.
We treat daily two hundred and five gallons of wastewater per resident. That's every day. We treat two hundred and five gallons of wastewater, I, I don't feel like I use that much wastewater. So, but that's the numbers you gave me.
Right, but that, that includes all of our regional customers in our surrounding towns, that are not just per.
For residents.
That's good, all right. That's the equivalent per.
But it does give you some perspective, they're treating a lot of waste, for sure. And then two hundred and nine gallons of drinking water are processed daily per resident. Again, just trying to show you the, the value that you're getting for the money that's being spent. This was recreations, sort of hard to read, but the gist of it is, with forty-five employees and over four hundred part-timers, they're serving about one thousand one hundred and seventeen patrons per day, that's what I pulled it down to. And that's three hundred and sixty, that's divided by three sixty-five, because I know you've got weekend stuff going on, but again, that's, that's a lot of people that are getting served by the recreation department, Harold does it. There's a, there's a ton of people getting served. I didn't realize our lakes and marinas got that many visits, two hundred thousand. Pretty sure that was my last slide, yeah, we're not gonna talk about it yet.
That was really a good job, David, thank you.
So, but David, I think that last thing you get from, we need to have copies of it, that needs to be published.
Absolutely.
That needs to go in one of our publications. That needs to go out and people can realize exactly what the services they get.
I'm gonna carry one around, man. I get back, what do you, what do you do?
I'm gonna have a little table of contents, I'm gonna flip right to it.
Well, we're gonna get you a better one, it's gonna be better, I threw that together last, just, just for y'all.
I can tell before the last minute.
Good job, David.
Yeah, I'm glad you did that, because not only are we showing the citizens how, what they're getting for the money, but we're also, it gives you a different. but we're also, it gives you a different perspective of what our employees are doing on our paths. When you see the employee, the headcount in departments and the calls for service and the amount of service that they provide, it gets a much different perspective.
It does.
And, and that, we all need to keep to the forefront.
And that, and it can include behind the scenes stuff that finance has to do, that H R has to do, that, you know, all the others.
So, the, the game plan would be to set up that public hearing for June seventh, is that right? Is everyone good with that?
Good job, David.
Ronnie, after here, Ronnie, for the slides that you didn't show, you can stay out there.
I'd rather, I'd like to do it in the morning early.
Right, and I have the zoning commission report, Planning and Zoning Commission has two items. So, we'll welcome Jamie back to board these for us.
She's getting ready, we do not have a work session.
We do not. We do not, yeah. We, we proposed the schedule to adopt in twenty twenty-two, we did decide not to do a work session because of the holidays.
I can take that off my calendar. We'll do it right now.
Momma does have a work session and you has a work session. So, you can opt to do, the August meeting is the second Monday and Tuesday because of national lockdown.
Yeah. Can we do that in here?
I think so. It's up here, yeah. Alright, let's turn it on.
Okay, I'm all session number you guys are.
Let's go.
Alright. So, continuing again, I've got two items to quickly go over with you that were in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission. This first item is a request to rezone the property that's highlighted in the teal patch from medium density residential to general business, limited use. And the limited use is specifically for multifamily dwelling purposes only. These properties are located at the intersection of Whitesole Drive and address as three two one three and zero Whitesole Drive, consisting of Alanis' property one one two four seven eight and one one two four seven four. This area is called for under the future land use designation as regional commercial. So, the rezoning request to general business is consistent with that. And the proposal in terms of multifamily is consistent with the residences in the surrounding area. This shows the existing zoning of the properties. At the April twenty-fifth Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, they recommended unanimously approval of this project. Staff is recommending approval consistent with option one in the consistency report. And we are recommending that this item be placed on the May seventeenth City Council agenda for public hearing date. Happy to answer any questions that you might have?
To May seventeenth?
That's correct.
We have kept a running list of, or working list of our multifamily as a percentage of our total residential units. Can we get an updated copy of that? Because I'm starting again, I don't know about other council members, but I'm getting a lot of folks in the community that are asking about all the apartments, the growth and... It's just good to be able to talk factually is what it is as a percentage of our total overall.
That's a lot of very help.
Yes.
So, would you like us, since this would just be a rezoning request and it's not associated with any development proposal yet?
Just leave that one out, we'll get us caught up before we're at.
Sounds good.
Yeah. Is that good to everybody?
Alright, let me try to move closer. I think there's always a bunch of things. Okay, I think I'll start here on the next one. So, this second request was also heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission on April twenty-fifth. This is a rezoning request to rezone the properties that are highlighted on the screen from medium density residential and medium industrial to planned development. Included in the packet is the master plan narrative and master plan map. On that map includes a total of two hundred and fifty-two multifamily units in various buildings, seven different buildings. Showed, shown on the slide, as well as a clubhouse and a pool and different amenities. So, just in terms of context, this is on the south side of Bonner Bridge Road, consisting of, the address is eighteen fifty-one, eighteen sixty-five, and eighteen forty-two East Buck Hill Trail.
Is that, is that, is it the fire department, I don't think it's still across the street. It's still in the general area.
Thank you. And so, this area, if I can get to the top here.
David, can you show me that and records that where the school and fire department and all that is located?
The school is, is right adjacent to it, direct, it's immediately to the west of the school. And then, the fire department is, is further east.
Same side as the school?
Yes. Look here, so here's the school. And there's the fire department right there. Again, I'm not sure if I'm sharing.
That's, that was good.
Okay. Alright, so this...
Why, why are they right across the street, even though this is the older imagery that you've got? Where's ever been the other, it's the same concept, generated apartment.
So, how many is in this area here from the beginning?
Two fifty-two. Okay, and so, this area is, is, I'm sorry, is future land use designation as suburban residential. So, we are recommending the rezoning because it is consistent with that. Okay, there you go.
And Nolan, can you, or Jamie, give us a, just a brief revisit on what planned development means?
Sure. So, the, the planned development is, I guess, you know, some, most similar to your conditional rezonings that you had in the past. It is the most flexible zoning district that one can apply for. Essentially, a developer or an applicant would be creating their own parameters. But in balance, as part of the justification for that, the, the development has to be of enhanced quality, greater than what the ordinance or what the U D O requires. So, you'll see in the staff report from the Planning and Zoning Commission, there's, starting on page one into page two, there are a list of bulleted conditions that the, the developer has committed to, where they're actually outlined what they're providing as greater requirements and proffers, if you will, where, where the ordinance may require a certain caliber of trees or a certain quantity that going above, of that. Different design standards associated with the development, greater open space percentages. So, there's quantifiable enhancements associated with the planned development case. And that's how staff can help to justify that the applicant is meeting the intent of the, of the planned development. Now, this is also...
I'm sorry, how much of our development is this allowing, the planned development over, if it was, say, M D R?
Well, the M D R is a density of like four point eight five units per acre and they're closer to sixteen here. So, that gives you kind of a, of a comparison. I think somewhere I wrote down how many units it was generally. Yeah, so, I guess you can compare two fifty-two to, I don't have my phone, but four, almost five units per acre versus sixteen.
Okay. And where, and this general industrial is that, the Martin Marietta Plan?
There's a sliver of the property, Kathy, I'll try to get to the zoning map. Okay, so, I just put, I'm pulling up the zoning map now that has a, a sliver of the M I that you can see kind of on the eastern portion of the property.
And, okay, but that's not Martin Marietta now.
Yeah.
It is.
It, the quarry is which?
Yeah, the quarry is to the south of this property.
Right, so the, the quarry and that, those properties are all been approved under a prior conditional industrial rezoning, that's C I seventy-six.
Jamie, what piece of property did P N Z just turn down for a while last week?
The Planning and Zoning Commission?
Yes.
That's this property that wasn't recommended.
That's this one here. So, three two, was that three two both? And I think that the reason I was asking the question about planned development is, when we broke the U D O, that was a big topic of discussion, how we could allow flexibility and hopefully create better projects, broader projects that would be a contributor to the community for a concession of something else. And having those as bullet points, and if you read these bullet points, they're significant. And I've read some of the information from the P N Z meeting, but I know that area's getting taxed a lot, traffic is a big issue, but they address some of that. At, at least from an assistance standpoint. So, I would just, my point is, these, this planned development and the bullet points matter tremendously. This is not just a request that we were hearing at the office. There was a lot of staff time and a lot of development time going into this project. And we've had two or three.
You've approved two, at least.
Yeah. Yeah. That's right, two that I know of. So, a lot of good data in the packet, with really good information there. Thank you.
So, so this item was originally going to be requested to be heard for the May seventeenth public hearing date, but the applicant has requested that it go to the June twenty-first public hearing date. There were a number of people who live off of that west Buck Hill Trail at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. And they want the opportunity to connect with those folks and see if there's anything that they can do to help address some of their concerns.
Well, obviously, if they're gonna put as much effort into planned development as they have, that, that is why they're doing it.
Yeah. So, I, I don't know that there'll be any changes at this point, but this is what their, their request is, not, not have it on the seventeenth. So, we'll, if you, if you're Selma Klein, then we'll gear it up for June twenty-first.
That's gonna be great, yeah.
Alright.
And all that said, of planned development, what is the sta, do we know the status of the Royal St. Mark's?
Yeah, they're in front of the T R C for Cycline over here.
Oh, cool, okay. Come, it's been a little while, come.
Yeah, the new plan, yeah. Because I know the other apartment's now on St. Mark's, it's, they're getting near the end too.
Yeah, a good lot too.
That's right.
Alright.
I can say them now?
Yes, you can. Thank you, Jamie.
Of course.
Item F is the city manager report. Councilmember Law is already mixed. Do you think that's one of them? Okay, so everybody sit, anybody have anything else? Kathy, you all good? Okay.